Welcome, everyone, to this joint meeting of the South Kingstown Town Council and the South Kingstown School Committee. It is Wednesday, March 9th. This is our budget session. And our first order of business is to pledge to the flag. Please rise and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I will let you take it away, Raissa, or Kristen, or whoever wants to tell us what's going on.
Thank you so much. So this evening is our, obviously, our joint budget session with the town. And I'm going to get used to this device, maybe.
It's a roller.
It's a roller? Yeah, you can try that, maybe. Next? Okay. Oh, good, thank you. So, on February 9th, 2016, the school committee approved our budget in the amount of $60,270,334. It went back. Oops. It's very sensitive to the touch. And then, over the course of February and March, after we have submitted the school committee's budget to the town manager, the town manager goes through it along with the other town accounts. And we talk about other adjustments that need to be made. So the town manager recommended $344,000 worth of adjustments. And last evening, the school committee approved a new budget dollar amount, including those reductions. So the school committee approved the budget last night in the amount of $59,926,334.
Kristen, can we just clarify things for a minute? The $344,000 is really $144,000 in adjustments. There's $200,000 that, subsequent to the submittal of the superintendent's budget to the school committee, a letter came in from the state indicating a necessity to spend additional dollars, $200,000, for the acquisition of computers to allow for the elementaries to be able to take the standardized test using computer rather than paper. Adding that to next year's budget didn't make sense to me. If it's going to come from undesigned funds balance within the school fund, whether it's spent before the close of this fiscal year or during next fiscal year, it's six of one half dozen of the other. My concern with putting it into next year's budget was that it would then put the base of the school budget up $200,000 for next year because it's a one-time purchase. So I said to the school superintendent that, as far as I was concerned, the 200 needs to come out of next year's budget. And if they need to purchase the computers sooner rather than later, that's fine. But if they don't need to buy the computers, if there's some change with the state and they don't need to buy them until this time next year, it can come from the '16, '17 year, but it's not going to come out of the budget itself. It will come out of the retained earnings of the school fund. So the only adjustments that are there is $144,000. The 200,000 really is expenditures that will occur that wouldn't be subject to inclusion in the budget itself.
Can we review that with Chris from the committee yesterday? So the next slide was updated to show you the revenues and what the dollar amounts are now, back to the larger dollar amount, the expenditures.
Can you go back to the revenues? Because I think it's important that people look at where the revenues are coming from. Because when you look at the property tax transfer, that's equal to 85.75 percent of the entire budget. So almost 86 cents of every dollar that we're spending for school purpose at this point is coming from the property tax. When we include the monies that come in from state aid, that's $7 million. You're up another 11.8 percent. So by and large, between those two revenue sources, you've got over 97 percent of the revenue statement coming, really, from two factors. But while the property tax transfer to the schools is 85 percent of their budget, it's only about 74 percent of the total levy, since the money is also going out to debt service or senior programs in addition to the general fund. But I think this is a very important number because even though we see a minimal increase in the expenditure levels of the school fund over the last several years, what we're seeing is, on a yearly basis, additional property tax as a percentage of total program. And when we look at the state aid, just as we did on the municipal side, we see a substantial erosion and a continued erosion. I mean, going back to the late '70s, we had a 30 percent reimbursement on schools. We're now down to, what is it, about 11 percent? So this is where the problem comes in, is in terms of the property tax and the requirements to be able to meet these program budgets.
So this slide shows the percentage of budget.
I want to go back to the revenue sheet, the expenditure sheet, because I think that it's...
Give me that one second.
I think it's important to look at that because it's more than just the $33.9 million. You're looking at 56.6 percent of the total budget going for personnel, salaries, compensation, and another 23.1 percent on the benefits. So overall, you've got, what's that, 79, almost 80 cents of every dollar you're expending is directly associated with your personnel function. So you can see that when we deal with services that we're purchasing, as well as commodities that are being acquired, there's not a lot of money that's there. It's really related to that 80 percent that's coming out of the educational component, going directly to personnel and benefits. I'm all done.
This slide illustrates what the manager was saying of the relation to the percentage of our budget coming from state aid, a significant decline that we've seen from, let's say, 1996 to current, and it just continues to be. And this is a slide that is used, sort of, for a representation of what our budget has been in millions since 2011. And certainly, there has been an increase, but it's been, you know, a slow increase. It's a little bit of a redefinition slightly. The next item that the school committee asked me to include again, which shows over a period of time from 2005 to 2009, a time when we really weren't seeing a significant drop in state aid, the economy was different. So the percentage increase in property tax transfer from the town was significant, 1%, 6%, 5%. And in 2010, for economical reasons, and also that happened to be here, that we were starting to build the funding formula, we saw significant issues in funding at town level through property tax unemployment. And we saw zero or just slightly over zero increases in property tax transfer. And now, the combination of the funding formula resulted in some significant cuts that the community saw. And this year, the percentage increase will be 2.134, or a total increase of $1173,503. And there's a picture that represents what that was all in terms of percentages and, you know, why from 2010, which was quite recently, we had to make some significant cuts where from 2006 to 2009, there were long additions. So, as new, and this budget really hasn't changed since the last time we've seen it. The gap closing committee is going to bring their recommendations to the school committee, I believe, in April. They are recommending several years' work of recommendations over this budget here. It's really focused on an influx of professional development, focused on the techniques that we researched and that the facilitator brought to our attention that are in order to close the gap. We've added some funding to the professional development line item, which is in the amount of $50,000. Additionally, it was brought to our attention that having specific interventionists that were explicitly teaching skills is something that was both in the research and also a significant request item from our teachers. When Marianne went to the buildings and sat down with teachers, they spoke of needing to maybe change the model of our math coaches to coaching sometime, providing student interventions at other times. And we knew that the pre-math coaches were more able to service all four elementary schools and blah, blah. And so you see the addition of an elementary math interventionist. And it's likely that a recommendation for the following year would be another elementary math interventionist teacher. And there are teachers that are interested in moving into this leadership coaching interventionist position. Additionally, as a result of community conversations about assessment and grading, the community brought to the attention of the school committee that we are in need of academic proficiency centers to make equity for all children, to be able to access support and also supplies. So, for example, for a science fair, in one home, they may be able to come and go out to a store and buy a plethora of supplies, and their parents might have experience putting together a science fair backboard and some sort of an experiment. But that may not be the case in every household. And so to equalize that opportunity for all students, we put together a plan to staff the high school in Purvis Corner before and after school with some stamping and some materials in the amount of $30,000 for each site. And if that works out well, which we anticipate that it will, then we'll open up that opportunity for blah, blah, and beyond. We made a commitment to our wonderful music program to add a .2 high school band director. We have advertised that position, and we're already getting a lot of feedback from folks who would be interested in either remaining in a position or applying to a position. We also have a need through the IEP screening, taking a look at the IEP needs and matching that to staff members of a .3 occupational therapist. We've added that. We will continue to shift slowly from a paper-based classroom environment to a blended learning environment. And then, this year's transition is focusing on blah, blah, and also grade four as the manager of the public too. There's been a change in ESL requirements for the state of Rhode Island, requiring ESL certification for many of our classroom teachers. We currently only have two classroom teachers who are ESL certified. One of the teachers is not teaching currently in the ESL school, and the other is a parrot teacher. And so in order to make certain that we are able to retain our highly effective teaching staff, we have created a partnership with Rhode Island College. And we have put together a cohort, and 12 to 15 of our teachers this year and next year will be able to cost share to take a cohort of professional development so that they can get certified as ESL teachers, and then they're able to teach the students themselves if we don't have to lay off our existing teachers or order to hire ESL teachers. So that cost-share program is costing us about $30,000. And so the plus path rate page, and I don't know whether this is an app I didn't do, but I'm not sure if you saw this page, so maybe we'll define. We made some certain increases after the town managers, through conversations with the town manager. As in previously, you should ask for the reductions given the multiple decline in 77 students, the smallest class size average, always compared around the district. Certainly, it's not our intent to, you know, have classes at capacity, but by a class I gave that I shared with you last meeting, it's not my job at the overall, generally impact on class size for 2.0 of FTE in the entire school. So that certainly doesn't have to be too full of time teachers. It could be if our time teachers in many departments, I mean, less than their load by .1 or .2 overall, a 2.0 FTE reduction. One certified FTE, last year, we were able to retain all of our, all of the folks in our ESG bargaining unit because we were able to take some of our reductions from folks who have decided to retaliate or take a leave of absence. We're hoping to certainly do that again so that we're not impacting existing staff. But we have, so we have not identified where that is coming from yet, but it would be now certified. In addition, we came up with non-staff-related expenses, and certainly you can go through these in the future, but some of the ones that we increased it, increased, increased, were a reduction in after-school program needs versus the demand, elementary through high school. So there are certain programs that aren't running and haven't been running, and so we're touting that budget item from one year to the next. And it doesn't seem to be, it doesn't lead to either the staff member or student interest. And so we welcome the ability to take a reduction there. Reduction in unemployment expense has been increased. Reduction in advertisement postage expense has been increased. And the need for gas heating from the town has slightly increased in terms of the reductions. So less of a need. And also a reduction in water costs of approximately $3,000. For as you have to speak, Peter, it's what it is. And so if you have any questions or comments, anything you have.
Great, thank you. For the reduction in the need for an elementary computer lab, I saw, what was it, maybe yesterday or the day before, the governor had some pronouncement about bringing computer science to elementary schools? Is that what I saw? Is that...
Yes. Did the governor hire the innovation officer, someone who has educational technology for experiments and is planning to bring elementary computer science programs forward? We now run some programs in coding and certainly our school library and media specialists are well-kept, being able to work with students in that area. We're transitioning, so as we're purchasing laptops, we're creating, we're having less of reliance on disposable computers. And, you know, we'll be able to refocus some of them, some of them from the high school and also teach our voice stations from Purvis Corner.
I just have a question on the two high school teacher FTEs.
Do you anticipate that some of the repression from children? I don't know, to be honest with you, because we totally rely on student force selections. And typically, what happens is if it's a repression, that's one way of it. Sometimes it doesn't work out that way, that some of it hires in a department that's actually seeing a decline in student choice. Sometimes it's the least senior person in the bargaining unit, and sometimes there's work available for them in other school because of attrition. And so we certainly, that's our first place that we look, that we have to honor the student choice needs.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question about the academic proficiency centers. I really love that idea. I think that it's going to be a huge benefit to students. I noticed, though, that you also cut the after-school programs, it says reduction in after-school programs through elementary to the high school level. Are any of those similar to this academic proficiency center, or are they totally different?
Right. So one of the programs that we have after school is an after-interventionist position, and now the after-interventionist program today will take the place of that program. But there are other programs that work for, so, for example, one of the programs that we put in at the request of some of the PTO and families at the elementary schools was a Spanish after-school program, and we were unable to secure a teacher, even though we advertised widely and broadly.
Okay.
So it's in that vein.
Oh.
We're just finding it very difficult to staff some of these after-school opportunities because teachers are very busy working with their own students after school, or they have families and they're supposed to teach their students.
Okay.
Whatever's running, we've had things that have historically not been running.
Okay. And then also, you mentioned expanding that if it goes, if the demand is there, to Broadrock Middle School. Do you have any intention of expanding it to an elementary level, or is it just for the middle schools and high schools?
So I think we have to bargain from different schools and think about what kind of support students will need and are asking for. And also, the idea of how will the children be able to get home. So right now, we don't have the possibility of going to a primary school.
Oh, okay.
And that's really difficult to transport young children on a late bus because, as we know, the walk, the bus stop, it will be longer for children than neither for the road. And so we've got to balance the need for that work with something equitable where, you know, we can't just say that parents are willing to give up.
I got you.
We have started those conversations with elementary principals that they want to see and hear about feedback from how it's going in Edvers Corner and that school. So it's not off the table.
Okay. And I had one final thought. I had watched the last meeting of the work session that we had, and I had mentioned to you about the declining enrollment and finding out why students are leaving or families are taking their children out of the schools. And I think that you might have misunderstood a little bit. You said that, you know, you didn't have the staff to dedicate to really study that, but you felt most people who homeschool their children did so for, you know, they were happy to do it, it was a personal reason. And what I was implying was that, you know, a simple one-sheet, when somebody comes to unenroll their student, that just says, you know, is there anything we could have done differently, or why are you leaving? Just to quantify, like, why we see this declining enrollment. Not to say that we're doing something wrong, but I think in any business, it's important to find out why somebody opts out. And I don't mean to commit a staff member to it, rather, just a simple, you know, why did you decide to, you know, do something at such a great expense to you when we have this free education available? Just to make sure that we're not missing anything. So I just wanted to clarify that and make sure you understood that.
I appreciate that our patient group is something that you talked about in terms of social work, insurance, have paid calls to families to try to honor this information.
Oh, good.
And I want to come up with a plan that really works to give us some data to rely on. So certainly, we'll be willing to bring your suggestion back to our leadership team and think about what that will look like.
Sure.
Because when they're unenrolling, sometimes they're really out of school. This is out of...
No, I know, it's like...
And I want to agree with you.
No, no.
So sometimes they do that at the school. And they certainly have a personal relationship with either the principal or the central office. I mean, the office staff in the school may be more, I think, willing to provide some of that information. And we've talked about it as maybe even, like, exit...
Interviews or something, yes, exactly.
So we still could talk about that, but I'm glad you gave that clarification.
Thanks.
I'm just going to jump in quick for that one.
The other thing is, it's important to remember that we have a population decline, not only
people who are opting out of the schools, so that the enrollment is declining for more than just people deciding not to attend.
Oh, yeah. And I'm not implying that we're doing something wrong and scaring people away, but I just think it's important, no matter what, to find out why people are leaving.
Yep.
And also, we're all that's home, you see, that parents are excited that they're still getting home. We have seen enough in homeschooling and buses now.
Thank you.
I'd like to just ask, who's going to be staffing the proficiency centers?
So that will be offered to our teachers, and we put it out in a posting to them and ask them who we will be staffing.
Quick question, and then I'll make the comment. I look at the line items because I'm a math person. A decline, you explained, so I don't have to ask the question about the after-school programs. Summer pay, ESP or ESY. That decreased by $42,829, if I'm not mistaken. Is that part...
So ESY, we are for special education students. It's a requirement in the IEP and there's a specific criteria that's decided by the IEP team as to whether or not the child has made a decline in his entitlements to summer services. And we've seen a reduction in the need for summer services because the staff is doing a wonderful job and, you know, children are...
Oh, it's good, the number went down. I just didn't know why.
Right. And so it is significant, but it's a positive program. And we have, you know, nurses and therapists and wonderful one teacher assistants.
Thank you. I'm curious if you've seen a shift with the dual language immersion, where families are moving to those schools, or are they staying in their home schools?
So what we have, do you mean moving from the...
Well, yeah, like from Mattoonik or West Kingston.
To my knowledge, I haven't heard of that, but I do know that we absolutely are seeing families that are coming in from North Kingstown and Borah and are moving here because they came to the DLI informationals. They contacted us a year ago. They asked, you know, where do I move so that I can get a bus, if I need a bus, and if I move to find a house in Tewery, and I still want to be a part of the lottery. So I know that for certain because they continue to call.
It was just, you know, my thought when it first began was if you had, say, a second grader and then you had a kindergarten student, you're not going to pull that second grader, I didn't think, you know? And then you'd end up with kids at different schools. I just wasn't sure how that was working.
Some of them have happened.
They have...
It's very rare, but some people have asked for permission for their older students to move.
Right.
And some have split the family. And some have, you know, just a little younger student, maybe the older student may not be the match for that. But I would say largely, it's families making a choice for their firstborns and that they really invest in being coming to school here. And again, they also are particularly with other South Kingstown schools that are not public schools, who are their choice, but maybe a different choice because of dual language.
I just wanted to say, as an aside, and being a resident, my children are grown and they're out of the system. I found great pleasure in reading the front page of the Providence Journal when South Kingstown was very proudly recognized. And I also take very much pride in the fact that you all, not just you all, the teachers cumulatively have our schools ranked one of the top in the state. And that's something you need to be proud of. And I certainly know that you probably do, but I would hope that you would recognize the schools in such a fashion so that they feel so much appreciated because, truthfully, they're very fortunate.
Yeah. And we had two pieces of news that were reported last night as well. So you know how well our schools did on the park assessment, and the teachers and students were very, very hard for that. But we were notified that three of our schools were labeled as commendant schools. And this year, because it's the first year of the park, they thought only options are commendant and typical. And so we had no schools that anyone in the state of Rhode Island. We had, there were two other communities that had two schools, and there were others that had one school, of seven teams, and we recognized we have three. And so that was a wonderful, wonderful achievement. And you have to meet several issues. It's not, several criteria, it's not just proficiency on state assessment. Another piece of it was school safety achievement gaps. And that was very nice feedback, to know that that's being recognized in metrics that lie in measuring. We also had our graduation rate data that wasn't available to us previously, and it's, the year report was 91.4, 91.5, and this year, 91.6. So hold that high number. The total for our home students is, I mean, certainly, we aspire a 100 percent, and we won't stop there until we get there, but it was good feedback, good data. And they were able to break it down for us because it's only four here. Our graduation rate is something we can't calculate for ourselves. It's when you're a tenth grader, or they move in when you're a tenth grader, or if they take five years to finish high school, and they're thrilled to death that they were able to accomplish an achievement school, that, none of those...
All right. I'm not sure that we have any real data on terms of people coming in for the DLI or even for our school system in general, so I... or even for our school system in general, so I think we're kind of talking anecdotally. And so I'll just kind of share anecdotally that, you know, with the DLI has been a popular program, so I'm not really speaking to or against that. But in general, I mean, just being a Realtor, there is, anecdotally, a lot of people do come here for the school system, and I think a lot of the time, especially when people come in from out of the area, they recognize Barrington, East Greenwich, and South Kingstown as being kind of very strong school systems in the state. But then when they look at the affordability, South Kingstown does quite better. So it seems to be a little bit of that blend. So, but just, you know, kind of, and this is, I think it would be good, so I don't know if we can create, you know, get data on that, but it's interesting, because some people come in, and they choose South Kingstown for our schools, but then there are people in South Kingstown who opt out. And so I think if we could try and get the feedback, I think we do have the feedback on why people come in, because they see the school rankings and kind of the state data, all right? So that's my thought. Why people opt out, that I think we don't really understand. And I think it would be good to get that, because I think maybe to get to that hundred percent that we strive for, you know, we have to kind of hear from people the gaps, that they are either, could be real gaps, or it could be perceived gaps. And that's the thing that always bothers me, I hate to lose somebody on a perceived gap, you know, that maybe we have something that they don't think we have, and they opt out, and maybe just a little better communication, they would opt in or stay in.
I have just a couple of comments. I have some concerns about what I, the data that I can find, approximately a two percent decline in enrollment year after year, for quite a long time now, and no reduction in our property tax transfer. The data that I can find says that actually certified and non-certified teachers are being reduced at a higher rate than enrollment drop, but administrators can be measured, are increasing, and programs, which I can't find the data to measure. So I assume that's another area that's part of the reason for the increased costs. But, you know, the Tax Institute has ranked South, Washington County in the top four percent for property taxes, as measured by median income. So I don't think the problem is that we're not spending enough. So I just have some concerns about declining enrollment and increased costs. Thank you.
So, I was part of an effort to answer the question about why do people opt out. Last year, we had five social work interns, three of whom took on that project. It hasn't been reported out, because the response rate was low enough to give us concern about the accuracy of the data. And frankly, it was hard to get data. So what I am comfortable identifying is that the most frequently identified reason was smaller class size. Now frankly, I think our class size is pretty good for student learning, but in a number of the charters, the class size is smaller, and that was seen as advantaged by some of the families. So, and we are looking at the possibility of recruiting additional student interns, and it's my hope that if we can get the person power, we'll get the answers.
Noticed that the transportation costs are going up by another sixty thousand or so this year, and just wondering why they're charging us more with diesel prices where they are at this point.
You know, let Mary Ann handle the fuel prices, but I want to get know that if we normalize it, let her downwind, and just got Mary Ann with me this morning, asking them to consider, if you are not using transportation, because you prefer to walk to school, you prefer to drive, would you mind trying to save us some money and use it to the environment by making a decision from here to offer your child out of transportation, certainly in extreme circumstances, if we need to, if there is a situation where we should get back in. There's only one concern, and we know this, and you just have to be very careful that students, parents, students with special needs don't infer that you're putting pressure on them to not receive something that they are staying entitled to, and also I am federally entitled to. So that, I've got a review written today, and April first, we'll send that home to families. Our hope is, by doing it this early, the transportation coordinator can work with the bus company to, at the least, shorten the child's bus ride, so that they're not stopping at all these places where we're not picking up or dropping off. But at the most, maybe we can collapse a run and save a bus, and then that will be a wonderful savings that perhaps we can replicate here after here. So we are taking a pretty bold step. Our legal folks at Concreter and the Hills is daring to try this, you know, we're for you for trying, and we hope that it's successful, and certainly we don't want to burden parents by making them feel like they can't take the bus. But Mary Ann is going to speak more deeply to the bus contract.
We just filed a bid for the bus contract, and we received two bids, we had four companies attend, and two big companies, and we did receive two bids. When we do file a bid for transportation, we include the cost of gas in the price. There's downside, and there's good side, right, and many years ago, it might go when our gas prices come through the roof. It didn't change our transportation. But so we did receive two bids, the company that did go, which is one becoming a place, and there's been no increase for transportation costs with his particular, their particular buses. Keep in mind that this transportation also includes the addition for transportation. Just so that you know, the other company that did bid on this, over a period of time of three years, their price was forty-five percent higher than the bump to their point hundred before the bid, so depending on feet foot, that, in the end, we don't have a fair decent per bus cost that's going to be saved.
I really appreciate you taking the effort to put that on the road, and I'd be very curious to see how this happens. Parents absolutely make that decision, and already know that they're not gonna be using the bus at all. So I anticipate you getting really good feedback from that, and hope it saves us all some money.
I would just like to make a comment for the benefit of the council members, the school committee members are all aware of this, and also for the benefit of community members. I'm not sure if you're aware that, you know, we got the DLI discussion underway a considerable amount of time ago, and several months after we began the discussion and started to move that program forward, I attended with some of my fellow school committee members, a workshop at the Rhode Island Association of School Committees, with people from the State Department of Education regarding the Rhode Island Department of Education's five-year strategic plan. In that strategic plan, they put forth that they wanted to see all districts in the state offer DLI going forward. We were already out of the box with that program, like before that came out of the Rhode Island Department of Education.
I am a member of, I volunteer with the Peasdale Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, and we recently had somebody at one of the meetings, that she said she was a private contractor for the school department, and she like ran a homework club after school at Champagne Heights.
This is Lauren, Mary Ann Jelley.
Yes, and I love her, she's great. Is that part of the program that you're talking about starting, or, I mean, I know she's at an elementary level, so I wasn't sure where, if that was in the budget, a continued program.
So that comes out of the county law funds, and that's a program that has been in the laws under different meters, although we're evolving.
Okay.
But someone who ran that program, particularly Lauren, and then Lauren has taken over that program. So the county community engagement program has been longstanding.
Oh, good.
I would say twenty years, but, you know...
I went to, yeah, I mean, I went to a couple of those homework club meetings, and those kids really get a lot from it, and it's more than just homework, I mean, they're, it's a huge benefit to them, so I'm glad to see a program like that continue.
She's actually starting, thank you so much for that, and she's actually starting a level book library at some of the housing complexes, so that students at home have their own books that are leveled based on the levels that we have in elementary schools. She's just, she's a delight, and she's so fair today.
Kids love her too, so that's great, I'm happy to see that keep going.
Comments from the council here? Or from the committee?
Okay. So, I do, sorry. With the dual-language immersion, I know that there's been big talk about expanding it, not expanding it. Where do you stand on that?
So we have, we had a lottery this year, we had more than enough students to be able to hold a lottery. There's a public-wide lottery that's held out February first, it was very successful. Some folks brought their very young children, and the children were sort of crossing fingers and saying, people, why are you in the lottery? And I was thinking, oh my gosh, I hope I will, this little girl's name, for the bucket. So we had ninety-three students apply as of that date, there are more students that have applied since, but we really think that more will apply during kindergarten enrollment, which doesn't happen until people. So we have thirteen home school, who identified their home school as a community, thirty-six who identified their home school as Peasdale, seventeen Wakefield, and twenty-seven West Kingston, for a total of nine and three students. So when we did the lottery, we did it by, you know, what's your first choice, what's your second choice, third and fourth choice, so the good idea, yours is the program. And as of that point, we didn't have enough students at Wakefield or Wakefield to be able to open a program at those schools, so we let families know that we're going to put the waiting list, if that was their one and only school that they could transport to, and that we would get back to them after the kindergarten registration to see if anything changed. But we had, we had, we were full at Peasdale, and we actually, at one point, were over by four students, but some folks changed their minds, and we have only, I'm looking at, just want to show them, I think we have about nine spots left at West Kingston, and we have folks that have indicated that they're beginning to pay or they're going to pay for work after kindergarten registration. We've also had some very preliminary brainstorming talks with our central administration and our principals, and then also some authors that I meet with monthly, and that Mary Ann and Pauline and Theresa meet with. These are the PTO leaders in each of the schools, and we said, you know, if we don't ever have enough of an enrollment to be able to accommodate this type of program at your school, or if we are unable to come up with teachers that are certified and Spanish-speaking and able to teach there, would there be another type of sort of magnet program that we offer, you just give to schools, that would be of interest? And they said, you know, STEM would be something that would be very interested in exploring. And so, you know, we're at the very early thinking stages about that, so not making any sort of commitment, but that's exactly to our... And so Pauline is going to be taking, she contacted the Rhode Island Department, and there are STEM magnet schools in Massachusetts and, I think, Northern, so she's gonna take a look at, like, what would that entail, what would it look like, bring it back to the Mitchumick and Wakefield families, to see if that would be something of interest to them. So, could go either way, we'll find out more data in April, but is optimistic that we'd really like to offer something for those families.
I just want to share that we haven't really talked about, I'm not that familiar with what Scott was talking about in terms of the social work help, the outreach. That's not really something that was talked about at the school committee table, and we really haven't talked about this. So I guess I just want to share, and I'm hoping that my friends here will be willing to have a full discussion about how we can have better outreach, and whatever outreach is happening, it would be good if we all had the same information, because it really hasn't, it's not something that's been discussed and moved forward on.
I would imagine when people do opt out of a school, they would be certainly happy to say why.
Right, so anecdotally, you know, when I bring up stuff anecdotally, a lot of people don't like it, but sometimes that's what the discussions are by the whole group. But yes, I've gotten that feedback, where I've talked to people who have opted out, they said if they had an opportunity to fill out a survey, they would have been very enthusiastic to do that. And I would say we have, you know, we would have to be cautious with the information we gather. You know, if somebody, you know, quote-unquote, "has an axe to grind," then, I mean, we want to try and interpret that, you know, and so it's not like we take it and set it down as gospel, it's data points. And if we can get a hundred people to do it, well, if there's a hundred people that have "an axe to grind," quote-unquote, then maybe that is something that we still have to look at. But I think we could kind of decipher through that, what's legitimate, what isn't, what can we do, what can't we do. So I'm just, I'm glad that we're starting to talk about it, and I'm hoping we'll, with this table in the high school cafeteria, we'll be talking about it more.
I had a quick question on the DLI program. We talked about at our last work session how it's difficult to find, you can't really train a teacher to be fluent in Spanish, like the ones that you want to hire. Is there any professional development to do that, or do you only hire native Spanish speakers for the DLI program?
So sometimes, teachers can become fluent enough in a high school and college program. So right now, we have a teacher assistant at the West Kingston School, who is teacher certified, who is fluent in Spanish. So we have our world language teachers, and now our dual-language Spanish teachers, who give them sort of like a Spanish proficiency assessment, they talk to them in Spanish, and they have a sense of their writing and reading, because it's really not just speaking in Spanish, but it's being biliterate. So I think it is possible to become biliterate to the degree that we need, but it's not, it's not plentiful. So, and I would say most of the dual-language gurus will tell you native speakers are what you need, because of the way they roll their tongue when they're saying Rs, and because of the different dialects, and kids through a K through five experience could have the blessing of being exposed to different dialects of the Spanish language. So I think one of the problems is that there are not a lot of early childhood teachers in the state of Rhode Island. The certification is a K two, or a one-five, or a one-six, depending upon when you got your certification. And so we have difficulty finding early childhood teachers in and of itself, but early childhood teachers who are Spanish-speaking is, just adds on another complication. We are actually sending one of our dual-language teachers and the dual-language ESL coordinator to Hartford, I think next week, to a job fair, to be able to give, and she's made these very cute beach postcards to attract them to our lovely seaside community, and hoping that they'll move here, you know, and go through, obviously, the same interview process of rigor that all of our teachers go through. But there are job fairs and reach-out from other nations that we didn't know about last year, so we're hopeful that those will start to kick in. But, and we also think, once it's, we're hiring more of the, you know, upper elementary grade positions, there will be more folks who are certified in both.
And I love, I know it's in the early stages, but I love the idea of a STEM magnet program. I think that that would be tremendous for the community, and it's nice to be the leader in something, you know, like talking about being the first in the state to really have this, you know, initiative, and I think that that's great.
We're hoping the computer science guy from the governor's office will befriend us, and perhaps mentor us in that regard, because our former STEM coordinator is leading this effort in science at the state, we know we already have her support.
Oh, that's awesome.
He actually graduated with me from SK.
Could you maybe give him a call? Would you be willing to email him?
I've already been in touch with him a little bit.
Oh, great, thank you, thank you so much.
That brings to mind another conversation I had, and this isn't budgetary related necessarily, but I'm very interested in the gap closing task force and what the findings will be eventually. But we still rarely get to see you. But we so rarely get to see you and talk to you. I thought I'd just bring it up here. I've been introduced to an organization called Eye to Eye, which is a mentoring program for students with learning differences. And they've been very successful around the country in closing the gaps for people with dyslexia in particular. I don't know if they're looking to expand and start chapters in new areas, but what they do is usually if there's a, a school or a university in an area, students from that school will go into the local school system and be mentors. But I think whether or not that organization would come here, I think there is an opportunity maybe to work with URI and get some of their teaching students into our schools, or they don't even have to be necessarily students in their teaching program, but students there who have learning disabilities can be effective mentors for some of our students. So.
Absolutely, thank you.
I'll try to continue that conversation that I've had with them and see if I can put them in touch with you.
We appreciate that.
Recently, one of the things I've heard about through the university, I guess, and I don't know anything about this, but it might be, excuse me, the respect of teaching English, but people keep talking about digital literacy. Explain that to me. Sorry. You can't talk.
So digital literacy is a piece of our work that's going into, actually, we talked about where it would fit in our program. So typically, our graduation requirements say that you have a point-five credit in technology that's needed. That was years ago before there were computers in the schools. Now it's important to have really proficiency in, in how to use this instrument and how to, how to navigate and not just see it as a keyboarding experiment or a typing. And so there are digital literacy standards, and it's a part of our technology plan to embed them either in all classes or in certain classes. So right now, there has been discussions between Pauline Lisi, our assistant superintendent, and folks at the high school to talk about, does it make sense to embed it in library media program? Does it make sense to embed it in the SK 101 series? And also embedding it in each of the subject domains so that when students graduate, they have, they have proficiency in digital literacy.
I wasn't that familiar, but I've had the opportunity, and I know Jonathan, you know Diane Carz, we've had the opportunity to speak. She's, I love her. I absolutely love her. I brought it up because we had a conversation, and my daughter graduated with an English degree, but she has her master's now in digital literacy. And Diane keeps communicating with me about digital literacy, and I'm like, I don't even know really what that means anymore. I wasn't there when I was in school, but, I mean, I, but, but I've had a lot of communication because people have contacted me from the university, so I just thought I would ask a question. Sorry.
And Diane is such a champion for our school.
Such an advocate.
She's tremendous.
And I apologize. I presume that's.
Oh, no, certainly. It's usually me that loses my voice in these sessions.
All right. Well, before any of us lose our voices, I'm going to turn it over to the public and see if there's anybody who wants to speak. If so, please come up to the podium, state your name.
Jim O'Neill from Intunik. Gosh, I hope I'm not the only member of the public who is going to speak tonight. Sixty million dollar budget and I may be alone. Listen, I spent many years on the town council and nobody came, so one way or the other, it was, it's very disappointing, no matter where you stand on issues, just not to have a conversation. I, I have to tell you that. It's incredibly disappointing not to have a conversation. I think I'm worried about the cost of our property taxes here. Being in the real estate business, I'm, I'm certainly concerned that, I read Narragansett's talking about level funding the school department. Their property tax rate with fire departments, nine dollars ninety-four cents. Charlestown's ten-ten and a sixty cent fire department for ten-seventy. And if we come through with a fifteen-eighty, and I know my fire department's eighty-eight cents, they're talking about going to ninety-five or a dollar, we're going to be sixteen-eighty, Versus ten-seventy-one, Charlestown versus nine-ninety-four, ten dollars in Narragansett. And I don't have the details, I'm just trying to give you the round numbers. I just hope our community isn't going to become unaffordable to many, many folks. Three hundred, twenty thousand dollar, maybe with the assessment here, the average, folks are approaching fifty-five hundred dollars of property taxes at that average cost. That's, that's a chunk of money. I can't complain about your budgeting. Basically, fifty million dollar budget if you take all the salaries, benefits, longevity, steps, everything else, you're pretty close to that number. What I am concerned about is, as you know, we, leave pre-K out, we've lost about twelve hundred students since the year two thousand, when we were almost forty-four hundred to thirty-two some odd today without preschool. It's concerning because I hear this wonderful success, and I'm very happy for it, an immersion program, and I agree with the effort towards STEM education at all levels, no question about it, but it just seems with this population loss, that there should be a number of programs where you've really got an awful lot fewer students in over the years. I just think there need to be more priority or prioritization of what we need to do. I just don't feel we can be all things to all students, and maybe that's the wrong attitude to have, but seems to me there's got to be priority lists there, because I'm really worried where our state's going here and how they're treating South Kingstown. I've taken a look at the few school budgets this year at the state level. I'm just going to give you some rough numbers, and I know you're probably bored with them, but if I calculate things correctly with our population out of the three-point-eight billion-dollar governor's budget, our taxpayers are going to cough in about a hundred twenty-eight million. That's better than three percent, but I factor in the difference for household income, we're above average, and so I put that factor together. Basically, with a nine-hundred million dollar secondary education budget by the governor's office, at three percent, you know, that means we're putting in twenty-seven million dollars to other school systems. Yow! Providence alone of the two-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars that the state is giving to them out of a three-hundred-fifty million dollar budget. Basically, we're giving almost seven million dollars to Providence. And at some point here, if you're going to have forty to fifty million dollar increase in the school budget at the state level, and everybody but us, and I've talked about this before, we have a double whammy here. Not only do they take from us, starting five years ago, but all the new monies, basically all the new monies are to balance out this education funding formula. But at some point here, another five years, everyone else is going to be spending the same amount per child that we are. And, and then we're going to be in a situation where we've got to make a decision, will the state start controlling per pupil costs, or will be, we be able to maintain our independence? Or will we have to, like some Vermont communities, have an assessment over and above the state numbers that they allow for the districts up there? I don't know where it's going, but it is a worry and it is very, very expensive. I don't know if NESDEC has changed their formula. Ms. Stringfellow, are they still looking at three thousand students in twenty-twenty? I mean, that's the last I saw a year or two ago.
I haven't looked at it today. I brought it to an earlier session. They seem to still be on target in terms of what their projections are based on birth data. Last year, we surpassed by about twenty students, and we anecdotally believe that DLI had a factor in that, because that's what parents were saying at registration. But by and large, except for the DLI factor, they've been pretty spot-on in terms of birth data.
Yeah, they certainly have, yeah. Maybe a year or two behind, but they've really done a terrific job. I just don't know if they maybe have changed with that one blip we had in, I think, the kindergarten group last year. But basically, I certainly, I talked to an awful lot of folks, and they're very concerned about the fact that our property tax rate is so much higher than our two neighboring towns. And I'm not going to go in who has more schools and all the per pupil costs, but I think it's a dangerous situation that we're looking at here, and I think we have to be very, very careful how we spend money. But I really implore you, there have to be programs that we can pull back on and really prioritize those that seem to be very successful, as you talked about, the immersion program. And just a couple other things, and I'll be out of here. I don't know what's going to be happening at the state level, but maybe a number of your committee members there, am I wrong that we may be going towards a state telling all the school districts, in fact, what we are going to be spending, or will we maintain our independence as we had? But it just, I'm very concerned that we're down to seven and a half million dollars. I mean, this is crazy. Seven and a half million, the town maybe gets a million and a half, we're nine million dollars, and our taxpayers are sending a hundred thirty million dollars up there. There's something wrong here. So I don't know where it's going to balance or equate out in the long run. I just don't know, but obviously you don't seem to have a concern about it, so maybe I shouldn't be. And, and lastly, I wanted to thank Mrs. Stringfellow because, for last year, because I carry around, you're December fifteenth, the South Kingstown Schools, our joint committee, this wonderful, wonderful booklet where you've told it all, everything from how many schools in every district, school costs, so on and so forth. It was really, it's a bible that I wish you'd repeat again. You know, I know we had a two-pager tonight, but this really said it all, and I think really could offer the community a lot of answers to a lot of questions they have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public?
Numbers of my life, and I just have some concerns with Jim's statements about taxes in South Kingstown. In the capital budget, I presented to you a chart. In fact, you put that thing back on. I presented a chart to you that looked at the tax bases for each of the communities in Southern Rhode Island. And that chart looked at South Kingstown, North Kingstown, Westerly, Charleston, Narragansett, and the state on average. And tax rates don't mean an awful lot. It's the tax levy per capita that people need to look at. As far as South Kingstown was concerned, in the most recent data that was available through the state reports, and it's available on the state's website for the municipal affairs, is that in the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, fifteen year, we had a tax rate that was at fifteen dollars and forty-eight cents. North Kingstown's was up at eighteen ninety-one, Westerly was down at ten sixty-four, and so forth. The difference is that the size of the tax levies and the size of the tax rolls. South Kingstown's tax roll is four-point-three billion dollars. Westerly's was five-point-nine billion. You can collect the same amount of taxes and have a much cheaper rate if you've got a larger tax base. Narragansett had a tax base of four-point-five billion compared to the four-point-three billion for South Kingstown. So yes, the rate's going to be cheaper. The common measure is to look at what the per capita tax is. The per capita tax in South Kingstown for that year was two-thousand-two-hundred-and-nine dollars. That's taking the tax levy and dividing it by the, the number of people in the community. North Kingstown was at twenty-seven. Westerly was in at twenty-nine. Charleston was in at twenty-nine, and Narragansett was in at twenty-nine. So, and as a state, average, looking at the total levy of property taxes, it was about twenty-two, twenty-five. So yes, we can have varying tax rates, but what we need to look at is what's the tax per capita as one of the measures? And I think that the town has taken a lot of efforts to try to provide quality programs at a reasonable cost. We can't do it without the state aid. I'll agree with Jim that I think that, that Southern Rhode Island in general is underserved by what we get, both in terms of the state dollars that go for education or for municipal affairs. But the sad part is that the reason we've got high property taxes is because we don't have the revenue sharing that's necessary. Can there be expenditure reductions? Sure, we can cut programs, but we've got to cut programs that may be popular, just as we've talked about tonight. But I, I do have concerns when we throw numbers around about tax rates, which are not looking at what the overall levies are and not looking at what the, the tax base is that we're drawing from. I'm not going to suggest to you that the taxes are low in South Kingstown, but I'm, I am going to suggest that I think that there's a reasonable effort made to keep it. And one of the other things, too, is when we look at debt per capita, our debt per capita numbers is, is half of what it is in some of the other communities and a third of what it is in some of those communities. Now certainly, that gets down to the bottom line of why our per capita is lower. When you look at debt per capita in terms of somebody like Westerly, they're up at thirty-seven hundred dollars in, in debt per capita. So then they're going to have a debt service payment that's going to be higher. They're going to, but if you're starting off with a tax base that, that comes in at almost six billion dollars, as opposed to the four-point-three billion that we have, it's going to make a difference. But it's the actual bill that people are receiving that they need to look at, rather than what the tax rates are with these, these other communities. I hate to preach, but I just get concerned when we're presenting data that, that really isn't, isn't balanced.
Hey, Steve. That's good clarification. Go with Liz first.
And I just wanted to say quickly, there was mention of when we had, I think it was, what, forty-four hundred students in the school system in, in two thousand? And I, I graduated from high school in two thousand and three, so I was there during the years that it was almost unbearable at that size. And I hope, frankly, we never get there again, because we were definitely busting at the seams. And one thing Jim said was, all things to all students, and he wasn't really sure if that was the right approach, but I think when you are maxed out at that size, you obviously can't be all things to all students. And having more manageable class sizes and the enrollment that we do, I like and appreciate the efforts that you guys make to be all things to all students. And I think that comes with the DLI program and the expansion to the STEM magnet program. So I recognize that effort and I appreciate that, and I, I think that, that you're making that deliberate effort. I think that's admirable.
I just wanted to go on the record that I did vote against the budget. You know, and just a couple, so just a couple of things to say. You know, I don't think that, you know, we do have a great school system, and a lot of people work very hard. I understand that. But I don't feel like we, as a group, have always, I'm talking about school committee, to evaluate decisions. So decisions are made, staff is added, and does not really look back to see how that went. So that is a primary reason I voted against it. And a couple of the positions I'll talk about are adding a dean and the student resource officer at Curtis Corner. The high school, now we're going to, away from three vice principals to two vice principals and two deans. And we're told that it's basically going to be a budget wash, but I'm just wondering, you know, is it possible that we could still do that with three positions? But even greater, there's really not a commitment that I've heard that in a year or two, we're going to look at it and see how it went. So those are the kind of the primary reasons. And I would like to see us, because the town and does have a very healthy, undesignated fund, a good reserve, that I know that, because town and schools do have a good relationship, that if we ever needed that, if we really got into a pinch, I'm sure that the town would help us. And the schools, I would like to see us tap our undesignated funds a bit more, maybe preserve more program, or give some relief to the taxpayer. And if we ever really did get into a pinch, I know the town would be there to get our back. But in the schools, we've been talking about striving to get to like a five to ten percent undesignated fund, and that's just not a good direction, in my opinion. Thank you.
Let me, let me comment on that. There was a question that was raised, I guess, I received a request from the school superintendent on my opinion as far as fund balance is concerned. And fund balance is a key both for the general fund and is a key for the school fund. One of the things that we have been able to accomplish with school fund balance is to be able to reduce the amount of dollars that we put into bonds to be able to fix school. fix school buildings. Last year, our capital improvement program had a five-million-dollar program anticipated for school bonds over that five-year period. That dropped to four million dollars this year, and the school committee committed additional dollars from their surplus position to be able to account for improvements to the buildings, the capital cost, without us being forced into selling additional bonds. The key here is that you borrow a million dollars over a twenty-year period with equal principal, and you're gonna pay back twice the amount that you borrow. If we can use fund balance that's generated by the schools, uh, to be able to offset some of those costs, one, we get to go with no interest in terms of the cost of the project, and two, more importantly, you get a hundred percent of that money back, that's reimbursement from the state, which is at thirty-five percent. That money can then go back into the capital construction costs so that it's in the fund to do additional improvements. I would hope that if we can continue to see surplus positions generated by the school, uh, department in terms of being efficient and not spending their entire appropriation, which has been the case over the last several years, then we will continue to be able to pay down what would be in bonds. The audit that I gave you this evening, uh, shows that the, uh, funds that are available from the school, uh, school fund itself is around, uh, two-point-two million dollars as of June thirty of, uh, two thousand and fifteen. That is up four-hundred-ninety-two thousand dollars from what it was the prior year, even though they're committing dollars toward capital projects. Schools returned about a nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar surplus for the fourteen-fifteen year. They're on track this year for probably another four-to-five-hundred-thousand, uh, dollars in terms of, uh, surplus position. So we'll be able to preserve that undesignated fund balance in the area that we've been, which is in the, you know, two-point-two-to-three-million-dollar level. And if it gets up to the three-million-dollar level, then we start asking, and we've, haven't been turned down yet in terms of the, you know, uh, management asking the schools to forward those dollars for the, for the funds. So I think it's a proper working relationship. You shouldn't operate any budget that's a sixty-million-dollar budget without having fallback positions. The monies that we hold in the general fund, based on council policy, should be sixteen-and-a-half percent of what our municipal program is. We're looking at undesignated funds of around, I think about nine-point, uh,
Nine-nine?
Nine-point-nine million, ten million dollars roughly, which works out to be in the twelve percent range. So we're still on target, but if we were to waste away the monies from the, the school fund, we wouldn't have that, the proper cushions and conservative management practices that, that we could institute as far as our debt program. Make no mistake about it, there's major work that needs to be done on facility enhancements and improvements, roofs, doors, windows, uh, heating systems in the schools. But if we can get a good portion of that without having to bond the money, it's in our best interest. And, uh, trying to say, well gee, we'll take less tax dollars next year, we'll create an operational deficit for the following year because if we don't have that money every single year, it's gonna be a spike in the taxes. And I think the one thing we've talked about since December when we started reviewing capital budget is how do we prevent spikes in the budget? Taxes are high enough. What we don't wanna do is to spike them high in a given year and, uh, have profound negative impact on, on the taxpayer. If we can try to keep things level, uh, we, we can do a better job. We need the schools to continue to cooperate with us, and again, I haven't seen that they have it. Uh, and that's why when they talked about the two-hundred-thousand dollars, I said, I don't see that as a problem. If it's a legitimate purchase, it doesn't belong in that budget, but it's there in the undesignated funds that are available for them. So both programs need to maintain those balances. We need to make sure that they don't become overly large, but what we also need to do is to make sure that if they don't need to spend the money on an operations budget, that that money's available to be able to put toward the capital. And that, that is what we've done over the past several years, and I hope we can continue that practice.
Um, Kristen, to Jonathan's point, um, do you evaluate, um, the new administrative positions when you create them after like a certain time period? Do you, um, like have a yearly evaluation, or do you do like a self-audit of, okay, did these new positions work, or, or what's your process for that?
So, there's a difference between, and, and to be clear, the dean positions are teaching positions, um, and the SRO position is a policeman position. Um, but do we do evaluations on staff every year? Absolutely. We have teacher evaluation, we have administrative evaluation to see if they are performing the functions as intended. Um, in terms of program evaluation, that gets a little trickier. So to do a full program review and audit usually takes an outside vendor to come in at a fee to be able to evaluate the program's effectiveness beyond what we're able to do at the school level. Right now I've started a, uh, program review and audit of our guidance department, um, not a program evaluation of our guidance counselors, but a look at the six-through-twelve offerings and to take a look at them with regard to the national guidance standards and also with the, um, expectations of the state with ILPs, given that, we, we did hear from the community last year, do we have enough guidance counselors? And are our guidance counselors, um, able to prioritize on the most important, uh, work to serve the students? Um, but that, you know, m- me pulling away to be able to do that, I'm not a, I'm not a, a vendor in program evaluation, um, but I'm certainly going to, to give it a thorough audit and review. And I think that it, it is something that certainly we learned about in superintendent school and, and principal school, but there aren't a lot of program evaluation experts out there that are not either costly or are really taking our self-assessment data and feeding it back to us. And so that's a concern.
So you would need something like that, say, to evaluate, um, I can't remember the name of the position that was at, uh, Curtis Corner Middle School with David Pope?
Dean, dean position.
Okay, so like to evaluate that, you would need a, a program evaluator?
So first of all, this, this is only the middle of the second year for that program.
Right.
So typically you would let a program go three to five years before you came forward with a program evaluation, and you'd seek various metrics.
Okay.
So we are in the process of collecting metrics on the dean position. The pieces that we have seen so far are very favorable. Certainly anecdotal data provided by families, by parents, by students, by teachers. Also looking at the level of in-school suspension, the discipline reports, the chronic absenteeism, the restorative justice practices, but it's, it's very early data.
Oh, yeah.
What we've seen has been very, very positive data, but a full program evaluation audit would come three to five years.
I was just curious how that worked and, and what the process was. Thank you.
Certainly.
Ava, one more, uh, point is that, uh, the school department also participated with us in terms of the budget development this year, and for the first time, we've incorporated with the ten different funds that we present in the budget document, uh, the superintendent, uh, went through and did the same exercise as every municipal department. So that's on tab twenty in the, uh, the budget document. Uh, any of the school committee members, uh, it's available on, on our website, uh, if you don't have a copy of it. What we're trying to do is to have all the funds with the same exact information. This, uh, you know, this presentation looks at the functions of the school department, its mission statement. It looks at what the, uh, functions are for each of the different, uh, uh, school areas, whether it's the middle schools, high schools, uh, or the, uh, elementary schools. It also then provides targeted priorities for, uh, the school department. Again, this is all written through the superintendent's office and to try to give a, a thumbnail as to the description of the performance issues that we look at, uh, and what the goals of the school committee. Unfortunately, the goals of the school committee, we had to cut back to one page from about eighteen, I think, that, uh, they started out with, but, uh, certainly, uh, it was robust. And obviously the, the last, uh, the last couple of pages just compare the budgets and, uh, in the same manner as each of our other funds. But, uh, anyone looking at our budgets will have all of the information of, while ten funds inclusive of the school, which is something we had not had in prior years.
All right. Seeing no more comments, I'm gonna, uh, consider this meeting to be adjourned. It's eight twenty-four PM.